We'd like to welcome everyone to the August 24th meeting of the New Bern Board of Alderman. At this time, the prayer tonight will be given by Alderwoman Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Alderwoman Harris. Everyone bow your heads. God of peace, we invite you to preside over this meeting. Even if we have different opinions, give us unity of spirit. Help us to each listen politely as others share their points of view. Help us to work as a unified team in combining ideas for a great outcome. Help us to work as a whole rather than as individuals trying to promote their own agendas. May we have a spirit of camaraderie in this room and work together on our shared mission. Amen.
Would you two men pledge allegiance to flag of our country?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ma'am, Kirk, would you call the robe?
Alderman Bingle, here. Alderwoman Harris.
Alderwoman Harris, present.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Best.
Present.
Alderman Odom.
Here.
Okay, our first order of business will be the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as stated.
Second. Motion and second is a discussion. See, and then let's have a roll call started with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle, yes. Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Mr. Hughes, it's going to number five.
Good evening, Mayor and Alderman. We've been hearing about MetroNet coming for several months now. We're excited to say we've got two representatives here, Chris Smith and Bobby Shatterly, and they're going to do a PowerPoint presentation to give us an idea of what we can expect as they start their process in New Bern and the surrounding areas.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Board. Again, my name is Chris Smith. I'm the Director of Government Affairs for MetroNet. With me today, I brought a couple of colleagues. I brought Mr. Bobby Shatterly, who will be your project director for the city of New Bern, and also Mr. Warren Jarman, who will be the construction manager. So we're here tonight to give you a little bit of an overview and review with you what to expect as we get started in this construction process and as we bring 100% fiber optics to the city of New Bern. So, one of the things that we really focus on from the leadership perspective is communicate, communicate, communicate. We want residents to understand what type of a project it is that we're undergoing, what types of things to expect. We want to reduce some surprises. We want to reduce some phone calls that come in here to the city, and we want to get direct those calls directly to MetroNet so that we can answer questions for folks. Construction, I won't sugarcoat it, can be messy, can be invasive. This type of a telecommunications project in most communities hasn't occurred since the 50s or 60s when the original copper lines went in. So it will be unique and it will be different for a lot of folks. We want to provide transparency and accountability, and we want to build goodwill and awareness with residents. So how we're going to do that is we're going to start off by communicating through a little bit of PR activity prior to the start of construction. I've already had a meeting today with Ms. Colleen Roberts, and we're working on some social media aspects so we can reach up to residents. We, about 45 to 30 days prior to the start of construction, will mail a letter out to residents. After that, it'll be followed by a postcard on how to contact MetroNet and that construction is coming. Then we'll follow that up with some individual yard signs, and then we'll have neighborhood entrance signs as well in case they miss the mail pieces. That letter that I spoke to you about, that's about 45 to 30 days out. Here's an example of what that letter looks like. It'll talk a little bit about what are the frequent asked questions that we get during this type of construction. Who's MetroNet? Are we in working in partnership with the city? And again, how to contact us directly for any questions that someone might have. This is an example of that neighborhood postcard. Residents should expect to see a postcard about seven to 14 days prior to the start of construction in case they miss the letter. This is a simple message that says, "Construction's coming. Here's how to call us. Here's how to reach out to us via our construction website that's dedicated to all things construction." Next, I talked to you about yard darts. Those are typically going to go into the ground around three to five days prior to the start of us working in a neighborhood. They look about the size, you can see from this picture as well, as if you had some sort of treatment placed on your yard. So there's small signs that'll be placed in that area. We also will blow up a larger version of that sign that looks like this to place at entrances and exits of neighborhoods just when applicable. So again, we're reaching out and saying, "Here's how to contact us with questions. Construction is coming." This is an example of an easement flyer that we would use. Residents can expect to find us working only in utility easements right away. In some instances, that utility easement might be located in the rear of someone's yard. And so if there's a fence present, we'll place a notice the day before to let them know, "Please unlock the fence. Please restrain your pets," and that we'll need to work in that easement the next day. At the bottom, our crew leaders will place their name and phone number, and they can call us directly too if they have questions about what to expect. This is an example of our construction website that I've mentioned. This is dedicated solely to construction and construction information. On that first picture in my slide, you'll see an interactive map. I checked this morning. As of this morning, New Bern's not up there yet, but you can expect to see that in the next 30 days or so. But residents can go on, it's an interactive map. They can enter their email, excuse me, their residential address and find out if construction's pending, underway, or completed. As the project moves along for the next two to three years, this will be a great resource for people to be able to see when we're coming to their area. Besides that is the construction ticket process. And so I referenced, we are going to drive people to this site to ask questions for us. This is an example of that form. It's just basically a name, address, phone number. You'll enter your question or concern. If you want to upload pictures, you can. Our commitment to the residents of New Bern is that we will respond to all construction tickets and resident questions within 24 business hours. Our restoration process, I touched on it a little previously. It's construction. It can be messy. It can be invasive. We'll follow what other utilities have done here in the city of New Bern. So if that's underground, we'll likely go underground. If that's aerial, we'll likely go aerial. As we do our, complete our build-out process, you could expect to see restoration occur as we go. So typically, within 24 to 48 business hours of the start of the construction in that area, we'll restore that area as we go. Our crews at MetroNet will all also be very identifiable. If you look out your window, you'll see signage on trucks that say, "MetroNet" or "Contractor for MetroNet." You'll see picture ID badges with a first and last name on all persons doing work for MetroNet. You'll also notice on their safety vests that they'll be marked and it'll say, "MetroNet" or "Contractor for MetroNet." We'll also partner with the city to provide a daily street sheet list to make it easy for fire, police, anyone answering phones here at the city. If there's a question about crews in their yard, is it a MetroNet utility or someone else, you'll be able to identify if it's a MetroNet crew and by the street that they're located on. We do respond, again, to all tickets and all questions that come into us directly within one business day. And we're very proud that we're upholding that as a company at a 99% rate. This is an example of the construction report. So all tickets that come into us and all phone numbers generate, phone calls generate a ticket to us. So what I'll be doing is I'll be reporting to the city each month how many tickets you received the month prior, what's our progress, how much underground construction have we completed, how much aerial construction have we completed. This will help give you a good pulse on what the construction project overall, how it's impacting residents, and how excited the city is for us to be here. In this slide, I have some examples of what our facilities will look like. So on the left, under underground, you'll see some pictures of our facilities. That first top picture, the small round, is called a, we call it a flower pot. It's how we connect services to the resident homes. The one below that is called a vault. For every so many flower pots, we'll place that vault. One of the things that I like that MetroNet does is we try to minimize our impact to the community. These are going to be mounted flush to the ground so that people can mow over them versus the large pedestal utility boxes people are used to seeing. And then there's an example if we choose to put our facilities in an aerial manner. This is the construction card. All members and contractors for MetroNet will carry these cards around. In some cases, our contractors might have English as a second language. So we provide these business cards to them. So if there's ever a language barrier and someone has a question, they can reach us directly very quickly with minimal impact. Again, back to that dedicated construction website. On that website, we have a tab called "Construction Process." We have a couple of really great videos that let people know what's an easement, what to expect during construction. There's a step-by-step guide that provides pictures as well on what they can expect as the process moves along. So finally, this is my information, and I hope you guys will take this down. If you receive resident questions, if you have questions yourself, if there's anything I can be of service to the city with, please feel free to reach out to me at any time. And I'd like to open it up now to see what questions you have for me.
Is the board have questions?
Ms. Smith, I'm sorry, Ms. Smith, how will you choose which sections of New Bern you'll start construction in?
That's a great question. We'll probably start based on underground areas, which is where we typically like to start permitting for poles. Typically takes us a little bit longer. So we'll look for areas where maybe it's mostly underground to start in.
Well, I would just encourage you to look at the Blue Water Rise community because they have no internet, no, and there's several homes out there. And I certainly would love to see them get some type of, well, they have no telephone, no cable, no internet. So it would be nice if we could start in that area.
You said that's the Blue Water Rise?
Blue Water Rise.
Thank you for that. I'll definitely look into that.
Well, we want to welcome you again to New Bern, and we appreciate you being here, and we look forward to working with you. Some of the areas of New Bern, you know, we have over 200 and something plates from a president provider. And we're glad to see some competition in New Bern. Part of that, if, in any way we can help you identify some more problematic areas of town, particularly some areas that seem to be a donut hole that just for one reason or the other, that we have citizens that presently just all but don't have any service and can't get any. We, again, we're not trying to in any way tell you how to run the rodeo, but we do have certain areas that could as expeditiously as you could be served. Now, I know that, I think that the, some of your first subscribers will be coming online. I think I remember from an earlier conversation with them about six months, was that what?
I believe, I believe spring of 2022, maybe as early as April, is what we have planned.
And so I think, you know, your total absorption of our market will probably generally be from 18 to about the three-year range. Is that about right?
That's correct, Mayor.
Yeah. So again, our doors open anything we do to help you and communicate you the concerns that we continually get. We just look forward to another opportunity. We, we say much for our children staying home with educational needs, and a lot of folks are working from home now. We really look forward to a much better fiber optic system. Anybody else have any questions, concerns, or anything?
I would just like to know, just for citizens that are watching this evening, what will be the process of them trying to sign up for the service? I know you'll start in April, but when will that process start? Where can they get information about cost and what they'll get for that service?
Thank you for that question. It's a great one. One place they can visit is metronetinc.com, and that's our actual sales website. It talks about the benefits of fiber, some of the opportunities that it provides communities. Residents can also use the interactive map there, pre-sign up for services. The way that we will complete this build project, as we complete the LCPs, which is our term for neighborhoods. As we complete a neighborhood, we'll open that up for sales. So they'll get marketing materials. They'll get contacts that we hope that as many people as we can get will sign up for our MetroNet services.
I think another thing to just help the public understand that, some of the, in the markets you've been into that maybe are similar to ours, where you've gone from a 10 to 1 upload-download speed. I would assume you're going to be a 1 to 1, or I'm not kind of, I'm not trying to say what you're going to be, but it's going to be, the upload's going to be much faster probably.
Yes, sir. It'll be asymmetrical. So if you were to choose a 1 gig service, you'll get that for download and upload as well.
And customers probably will not have the load management phenomenon that's thriving or any other sort of things with your system. Your system doesn't need that, being that it's fiber optic. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct, Mayor. In fact, one of the best things about fiber is that you don't have that share time with your neighbors. So Saturday nights when you're streaming a movie, we've all been there, and you see, I like to call it the wheel of death. You won't, you won't experience things like that. That 100% fiber optics is delivered directly to your premise, is what we say. So you get a straight fiber connection coming into your home.
So you guys are, are you pretty much up and running in Fayetteville now?
We expect to see our first customers this fall. So, but we're, we're working for construction actually.
Well, I was going to ask you before we end your discussion here, that in some of the markets similar to New Bern, it's a bit of a culture change from the traditional TV box, cable box, and that type of system. Your system is basically going to be the subscriber's choice that they're going to probably get to a smart TV concept. And they're going to be their own unilateral decision maker as far as if it's going to be Netflix or wherever else. Could you talk about that a little bit, certain customers?
Sure.
I mean, I don't want anybody to think you're going right into a retail store and going to be changing these boxes out and all that kind of stuff. You're not going to be doing that, right?
Well, you have the option for that. If you want to subscribe, would you offer traditional TV services where a box is present? We can offer that to residents. We offer home telephone to residents as well that prefer that. But yes, we are high-speed technology. We are for early adopters. We are for cord cutters. And you know, really, any of us today can be cord cutters at any age. So Netflix is one way that you can stream your TV today. There's Hulu. There's YouTube. We're the perfect choice for people who work from home, who stream a lot of their content. Because there is no degradation of service. You're not sharing with your friends and neighbors. You're getting that connection, and it belongs strictly to you at your home.
So having said that, you will not have like a retail store here of sorts, will you?
I believe we're going to have a retail store in the city of Greenville. I would have to check to see if we're having a retail store.
We hope not.
I'm sorry.
And let me tell you why we hope not. We hope you'll consider New Bern because one of our major complaints from our citizens with Suddenlink is that they removed the store from New Bern, and everybody had to go to Greenville to turn in boxes or to get service or to whatever they had to do. And it was very frustrating. So I really hope, I know in our early conversations, that was one of the things we talked about, the importance of having a local presence here, understand, you know, we understand cost issues. But still, I think it's so important to our citizens to have that face or to have a place where they can go to get the service that they need. And I just think it's really important that you consider that. So please do add that to your list.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I do have another question for you, though. So, you know, you showed us the flower pots. You showed us the other boxes. For people that don't have underground in their neighborhood and you have to go to the poles, will it then be from the pole hardwired to the house? Or how does that work?
Yes, it will come down from the pole and connect directly to the side of the home or inside the home. Yes.
So that's how it goes? And the underground just goes via the underground?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
One quick question.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned Fayetteville earlier, and then we mentioned Greenville. So is Greenville actually have their set, are they set up right now for the, for the surface now?
They're currently under construction.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you all for your time tonight, and I appreciate your questions and feedback. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this is House Scott, item number six.
Mayor, the next item is to give you an update on the Stanley White Recreation Center project. Basically, a few weeks ago, FEMA came in to do a public input meeting to talk about the process for the environmental assessment. The city undertook that assessment approximately a year ago. So it has been a long, arduous process. The 30-day public input period ended on August 15th. On August 16th, FEMA issued its findings on the environmental assessment. They issued what's called a FONZI, and that is finding of no significant impact to the change in scope of work that the city requested. So the Third Avenue location has been approved for the new site of the Stanley White Recreation Center. And so staff is looking for directions. If you'd like for us to start with the process of seeking architect and contractors, we can go ahead and do that. So we're just looking for your guidance.
I would like to move forward if we can because the citizens have been without a facility. It's going to be three years in a few weeks. And, you know, if we don't start now, it's probably going to take a year now for that process. So that'll be four years that the citizens do not have a facility. And the longer we delay, and the longer we kick this can down the road, the longer they're without the services that they deserve and that they expect from the city. So I really would like to move forward on this and start the process. FEMA has made their decision, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe basically by law, we have to put it in that location. Is that pretty much what I understand?
That's correct.
So I don't, I don't think we should waste any time. And let's just start the process. It's going to take long enough as it is. So that's my thought process on that.
Jamie, do you want, is any award, do you want to make a motion?
Absolutely. This is Alderwoman Harris. I'd like to make the motion that we go ahead and, are we approving this to be in the new location? Is that what we need to do because it just said discussion? So there isn't a motion to be made, so.
Well, the manager asked for direction.
Yeah, direction on proceeding with the architects and engineers and contractors to begin this construction process.
Did we lose her? We got Joe Biden on here. You think he don't want to make the motion? Jamie, did we lose you?
So you're saying this was, we were just discussing, or we need to go ahead and move forward with a motion? What, like, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Yes, ma'am. If you'd like to discuss it anymore, we can. But we're at the point now where FEMA has approved this project, and we can go ahead and move forward now if the board would like to give us direction to do so.
Okay, so they want direction to move forward. So are, don't we discussing, or?
After the motion's made, you go through discussion, huh?
I think after you make the motion, if there's any discussion, we will.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion that we move forward with the Stanley White project in the approved FEMA location.
Hey, Jamie, can we add to that and giving the city manager the direction to proceed with hiring architects and contractors or getting at least, what's it called, RFP? Doing an RFP for architects and contractors?
Yes.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Now, second.
Hey, you do have a motion and a second. Is any discussion on the motion? I didn't want to, I did not want to ask for an amendment to it or an incorporation, but I tell you, there's several things going on in New Bern right now that I'm very disappointed in the turnaround on architectural studies being done. And particularly on this project, as Alderman Bingle indicated, it's three years now. Time is of the essence to get any and all bi-engineered architectural engineering studies done. And I would like to say that part of that, you know, like attaching this to the, to the motion, but time is of the essence that in your procuring whoever these experts are going to be, that there'll be a penalty phase, as normally there is, but more particularly that we, we're very interested in a quick turnaround on plans and specs so that we can see some footings. So at this time, if nobody else has any comments, yes, sir?
I had a comment. We had talked, go ahead, Jamie.
I'll go after Jamie.
We had talked about, once this decision was made, about turning the old slab, if you will, to an outdoor basketball court with some fencing and some lights and things of that nature. Is that something that staff has some work done already? Or do we need to add that to the list as well?
So we have done some plans for that. But also, one thing we have to work on now that we know that the Stanley White Recreation Center is going to be relocated is we need to request a change in scope of work for the restrooms. So those restrooms will be relocated. And part of that, we're hoping to use some of that funding for some other upgrades. So we'll come back to the board on that at a future meeting. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else at this time? Yes, ma'am, Alderwoman Harris.
To what Mr. Odom said, are we talking about the bathrooms over in Henderson Park? Those will be, end up being moved over to the new location?
No, the restrooms are currently in the back of the park. And so that's one, really one of the lowest areas. So we're looking at bringing the bathrooms up close to where the Stanley White Recreation Center used to be in a more centralized location.
Okay. And so, and then the other thing is just, obviously, this has been a big controversial topic. I know I've been a big fighter, and I'm just going to be in support because FEMA stated that it has to be built in that location and just move on from here. I hope with the opportunity of it being in this new location, we can make sure that when the RFP goes out, that we have diversity in regards to the individuals that are reconstructing the facility just so that we can continue to bring economic wealth and stability back into our communities. And that would be the only thing that I have to say. And I call the question if no one else has anything to say.
Okay, let's have a roll call started with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Let's go to item number seven.
Next item is to consider a resolution approving the sale of 125 Hillmont Road. After receiving an offer from Hilliard Thompson to purchase 125 Hillmont for $7,500, the board adopted a resolution on June 22nd to initiate the upset bid process. The bid was advertised, but no upset bids were received. This partial is a vacant nearly half-acre lot with a tax value of $15,000. The property was acquired jointly by the city and county in May of 2019 through tax foreclosure. Unpaid taxes at that time were $6,394.65. If the sale is approved, the city is projected to receive $3,244.62. And the county is projected to receive $4,265.38 for those proceeds.
If there's no questions, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the sale of 125 Hillmont Road.
Second.
Motion and second is there further discussion? See, and then let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number eight.
Next item is to consider a resolution approving the sale of 597 Highway 55 West. Mr. Thompson has also rendered an offer on this property. The board adopted a resolution on June 22nd of this year to initiate the upset bid process. The bid was advertised, but no upset bids were received. The partial is a vacant .14 acre tract. Tax records indicate an additional value of $19,570 for a mobile home or structure. But public works staff has confirmed the property is vacant. The property was acquired jointly by the city and county in May of 2019 through tax foreclosure. The unpaid taxes at that time were $4,851.10. If the sale is approved, the city is projected to receive-
at that time were $4,851.10. If the sale is approved, the city is projected to receive $140.50, and the county is projected to receive $3,234.50 from the proceeds.
Mayor, if there's no questions on this, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the sale of 597 Highway Fifty-Five West.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there discussion? See, and then let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Deagle?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number nine.
Next item is to consider a budget ordinance amendment for FY twenty-one twenty-two. There are three items on this amendment. The first was the Emergency 911 Telephone System Fund is amended to reduce the annual PSAP distribution from the state. The reduction of $28,325 is due to the city exceeding the allowable 20% that can be carried forward from FY twenty-one. Also, we have a grant fund amended to recognize a $1,500 grant from the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council for National Night Out, and this grant required no match. And finally, we have the water fund is amended to appropriate $18,583 from fund balance to replace a 2013 Ford F-250 that was totaled in an accident in June of this year. Insurance proceeds of $16,417 were received and will be used toward the vehicle replacement, which will cost $35,000. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. We have adopted a budget ordinance amendment for FY twenty-one twenty-two.
Second. Motion and second. Is there discussion? See, and then let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. Let's go to appointments, starting with Alderman Bingle.
None tonight, sir.
Alderwoman Harris?
None tonight, mayor.
Alderman Astor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to reappoint Sunny Aluso to the Planning and Zoning Board.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there further discussion? See, and then let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Deagle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Do you have any others tonight?
No, I don't, mayor.
Okay, Alderman Kinsey?
None tonight, sir.
Okay, Alderman Best?
None, sir.
Alderman Odom?
No, sir.
Okay, let's go to the attorney's report.
One item to the mayor, members of the board. You've probably seen a number of emails coming from staff regarding the census data. We spoke a few months ago about the fact that it was forthcoming. We now have the official numbers, which means it's time to dig into our redistricting, getting our maps, our election maps correct. We have a number of weeks to do that, five, six, seven weeks. So I would propose a process to you. What we definitely need is a meeting date. We can, depending on everyone's comfort level, we could certainly have this on the agenda for the next board meeting. If you feel like we need an intervening special meeting, then this would be the moment to think that through. A process I would propose to you, Alice will be circulating what I'm calling a base map. It's just a starting point for you to look at and consider. In fact, I saw an email just before the meeting started where Alice is making that map a bit interactive so that on the user end, on your end, you may be able to slide the lines, the ward lines around different blocks, and it will tabulate the resulting population and demographic for you. So you can do your own experimentation, privacy of your own home, and get smart. You are also welcome to visit with Alice in onesies, twosies, and threesies to run various scenarios if you find that helpful. I would just simply encourage you to understand that Alice is there as a resource to you to run scenarios and print out whatever you need to help educate yourself in this process. Alice is not a public official. She doesn't have a dog in the fight, so be gentle with her. She's just here to help us, help you. So
She's amazing.
With that being said, if you're comfortable doing your homework in the meantime, we can take this up at your next regular meeting in September. If we get stuck in the mud at that point, we might consider some intervening meetings with the goal to have this wrapped up by the end of the month.
So you're in some direction tonight.
Yes, sir. I'm so curious about the call. Yes, sir. If you feel like with the interactive link that Alice has prepared for you and time with Alice, that you can be prepared to talk about this intelligently at our next regular meeting, that's fine, and we can use the rest of September to backfill additional meetings if we need to keep moving. Or if you feel anxious and you'd like to have a meeting between now and the next meeting in September, we can schedule that.
But is it okay for, like you said, twosies, threesies?
Just not foursies.
Understood. Just my concern is, and really, I would prefer if I could to meet with Alderman Best and Alderman Harris because it, our three wards are so connected, and when, if I move one way or they move one way, it impacts all of our wards. And looking at the numbers, instead of maybe coming here, all of us sitting, or, you know, I can certainly go online like Alice has provided and move it and get a feel for it, but I want to make sure that, you know, whoever's ward I'm in, that I'm pushing this way or pulling that way, I think the rest of us would feel the same, is amenable to.
Yes, ma'am. I would encourage, I would encourage all of you to do that. If you are looking at your ward from the base, the base setting, and feel like you want to move it into a neighbor's ward, it would be very helpful to get with your colleague
Get with your neighbor.
And talk, and talk that through, so we don't have to bake the cake live in a full meeting.
This is Alderwoman Harris. I think it would be beneficial if we just kind of maybe have a separate meeting and probably handle it all in one shot.
Like a work session?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, just because that will alleviate any questions from, you know, residents or anybody that's not understanding redistricting, because it's not just the city, it's the North Carolina. People get confused between the two in this. So I think it'd be easier just, you know, to do it out in the open for people to see how we're coming up with these boundaries. Because I know that I met with Alderman Best and Allison the other day, and it definitely can be, you may, and maybe hard to understand or manipulate in regards to how you utilize the map. And I just think it'd probably be easier and maybe we're able to put it down in one setting so that we can go ahead and handle it, so that we can move on and get this election that's going on. That's just my point of view. I'm Alderwoman Harris, and I'm done.
Don't you think it would be easier if you three sat down with Alice for an hour beforehand and worked out these details instead of trying to work them out during a meeting?
You know, I've been through this process before, and I remember very vividly, we were, we were brought in tubes, I think you remember. And so whoever's ward you were, and so we sat down with Alice, and as she moved the mouse, you know, it would show you, okay, by putting this in your ward, you gave this many, or this side loses that many, and it was very helpful. And then, of course, we had a public process where it was put out to the public. We will have public comment. Is that correct?
Oh, yes, yes, ma'am.
There would be a public hearing, public comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I want to make sure, because I agree with Alderman Harris, that we, you know, that the public understands what we're doing, because the drawing of wards is different than the drawing of county commissioner districts, is different than the drawing of state legislator districts, is different than the drawing of congressional. Each layer has its own different boundary.
Yes, ma'am.
And it is very confusing to a lot of people. So I greatly appreciate being able to help people to understand this.
This is Alderwoman Harris again. I have no problem with that. The only thing is, for me, is seeing the whole process. We meet, and then if we come to this meet and it gets changed, that was kind of a, you know what I'm saying, it was a waste. So I know based off the interactive one that she just sent today, it looks very interesting, like it may work out, but I mean, you can go back and forth on moving different pieces. I just, you know, we, I have no problem, we meet, and I just don't want to meet to meet, and then it's, you know, we have a meet, and then whatever we met about is not going to be what it is. So that's why I figured if we just do it in one full swoop, it would be a lot easier. But I wouldn't recommend it on a regular board meeting night, because it, you know, may be something that takes an hour or an hour and a half. That's just my suggestion. This is Alderman Harris, I'm done speaking.
Alderman Best, how do you view this?
I think it's a good idea for us to meet, you know, us three, and then, of course, we come back and have a public
Absolutely.
meeting to discuss it.
I just, you know, I could say, okay, I'll move this boundary over this way and make this neighborhood whole, and you may not agree with that. And so that's where we, we should, I guess, talk about. Is that correct?
Yes.
We tried to draw things to keep neighborhoods whole, and I think that's important.
Yes, ma'am, and it's, as you all are saying, it's a lot to digest, especially at your level, because on one hand, we are doing math. We are trying to equalize wards. We are trying to follow, we are, we are following the law with respect to the demographics. And then we have to just think logically about the politics of the wards and the neighborhoods that one might have to split up to get to that math. So it's, it's been my experience, this is my third go-around, to sit down, move, get the numbers right, and then go home and reflect on, on the fact that, you know what, it needs to be adjusted yet again. So it may be a couple bites at the apple among some working groups to get yourselves where you need to be. And the sooner you start, the better. If you can get yourselves to a point so that at the next regular meeting, we are having a very thoughtful discussion about it, my hopes that it would not be an hour discussion, but a ten or twenty-minute discussion, because you folks have done a lot of thinking through what you're recommending, so that at the end of that first meeting in September, the citizens would then have a couple weeks to look at your proposal to comment on it at the end of September.
Okay, this is Alderwoman Harris. Alderman Best and Alderman Deagle, do you guys have availability on August thirtieth for Allison?
Yes, the thirtieth would work for me.
That'll work for, that'll work for me as well.
Okay, what's the best time?
I prefer the afternoon, but I'll work around whatever would be best for the group.
All right, what I do is after the meeting, we'll just email and try to get a time together and go from there. And then, you're saying the first meeting is September, this will be on the agenda based on kind of the different conversations that we have with Alice, and then that will be kind of the interactive map. And if it improves and stuff by then, you're saying we have a public hearing and then, or how does it work after we all agree on the boundaries?
It would be, in a perfect world, it would be nice if we could leave the first meeting in September, leave that meeting with some consensus on where everyone is comfortable. That gives you about two and a half, three weeks to do your homework and see if everyone can get reasonably satisfied with a map, so that in September, we are presenting what feels comfortable to everyone. At that point, we can then, we will then have two more weeks for the board and the citizens to reflect on that, have a public hearing at the last meeting in September to approve it. If we get stuck in the mud in the first meeting in September, we've still got two weeks for special meetings to keep pushing toward the goal of being done by the end of September.
Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate that information.
Okay, anything else? City attorney's report?
No, sir. Thank you.
City manager's report?
Yes, sir, two things to talk about. First, I want to give you an update on how COVID has affected the city of New Bern and our employees. So since January of this year, 269 cases have been reported. Forty-five have tested positive, and the rest of those have been quarantined. Currently, we have 33 employees either, they have either tested positive or are in quarantine right now. And so that affects our workforce. We encourage our employees to social distance. If they have not got a shot, we encourage them to wear masks. Some do not want to do that. One of the trends that we have seen across the state is that cities are offering a vaccine incentive, amount of money to get a vaccine. So what we've seen is an average amount of $250 to encourage employees to do that. Whether that works or not, we don't know, but we're starting to see that trend. So we're bringing that up to the board, see if they have any interest in wanting to support something like that. What I can tell you is when an employee goes out of work, they're out for an average of 10 to 14 days. They have to use their own sick time or their own vacation time, and they will not get paid. Encouraging an employee, even though people feel strongly about the vaccine, encouraging someone to get this can help them not be out of work. We like our employees to be at work because we have a lot of things going on. Public works, fire, police, parks and recreation, human resources, administration, finance, everyone is affected by this right now. In my conversations with Sonya, we've just seen the numbers continue to grow. We will continue to encourage our employees to wear masks as needed, socially distance, and of course, get vaccines, but we wanted to bring this up to the board.
Foster, if a city employee is vaccinated, what would be the protocol for them? Do they have to wear a mask, or do they?
So I'm gonna let Sonya, Sonya deals with this every single day, so if Sonya could come up here and talk about what happens if they are exposed to someone that has COVID and they have vaccine.
So, let's see, a lot of protocols that change, ever changing, but if someone is vaccinated and they've been exposed to a confirmed positive, based on the CDC guidelines, if they are asymptomatic, they can put on a mask and they can continue to work for 14 days. Or if they choose to be tested on day five, they can do that, and if they test negative and continue to be asymptomatic, they can remove the mask.
Okay. And if an employee is exposed to another employee that has COVID, just tested positive, we send that employee, the employee home along with anyone that's been in close contact with that employee for a quarantine time, correct?
That is correct.
And they have to use their own time, vacation time, to do that with?
They use their sick leave or whatever leave they may have on the books, yes.
Okay.
Bobby, can I ask a question based on what you just said?
Sure.
So if an employee who is vaccinated or not vaccinated is in contact with another employee that has contracted COVID, not on their own, you know, they have, the other person has to quarantine and use their own sick time?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. That is what we've done since the FERC, the Emergencies Sick Leave Provisions under FERC exhausted in December, on December 31st. That is what we have been practicing, yes.
Well, the first thing I would like to say is this. I think we should do whatever we have to do incentive-wise to get our employees vaccinated. That's the simplest way for an employee to resolve this issue. If they become exposed, they don't have to go home, you know, if they're vaccinated. Is that, that's correct, right?
That's correct.
Right, Sonya?
If they're asymptomatic, that's correct.
Okay, so they don't have to burn their sick leave time or their vacation time or whatever if they're vaccinated. So if, can we use ARP monies to do incentives for vaccinations?
So the school of government has just come out with some information on that. I've been looking at it, and we've sent it to our inner finance director, Kim Osterman, to Sonya. We were all reviewing it, and it appears that in most cases, we would be able to use those funds. We're still researching that, yes.
Okay. Can we go back to the employees that have already received their vaccination and give them the same incentive?
That's the only way we would offer, do this, is if you could do retro
That would be the only way to be fair. I just want to know if we could use ARP money for it.
That's correct, yes. To give you an idea- That's correct, yes. Um, to give you an idea, you know, we, we ran a number based on 495 employees, which is what we have on our, we have 495 positions currently funded. Now, that number is actually, what are we at currently, about 460 employees or something like that? Uh, but the cost for that would be approximately $123,750 if we offered some type of incentive, like a $250 incentive for them to, to get that. Um, and yes, I believe the majority, if not all of that, could be covered by the ARP funding.
So, I think I saw where one of the colleges were asking students to produce a, um, what do you call it, passport now, to produce a passport, or have to be tested once every seven days or something. Is, is that, have you ever, have you heard that, Sonya?
I, I think there are some employers that are doing that. So, either you can opt to be vaccinated, or you can be tested periodically, it may be weekly, it may be, yeah.
Well, if you had the test I had, you don't want to do that weekly, I promise you, because that thing is bad. So, I, I think we ought to give the managers some direction to look into, we, we need, we need to start a campaign getting our employees vaccinated. And, and if it means giving them an incentive, then I'm all in favor of it. If it means that someone does not want to be vaccinated, then they either have to wear a mask at all times at work, or they have to get tested weekly or so. I mean, that's just a thought, I mean, it's open for discussion for anybody, but, um, we definitely need to start some type of campaign to get our employees vaccinated. That's the only way it's going to stop you from going home and burning your sick leave and your vacation time if you've come in contact with someone that is positive.
And I, I will say that public safety is, um, they're, they're working hard to try to get all police and fire vaccinated. They, they're working with, um, I believe the hospital for clinic for them to, to go and get vaccinated, for those that are interested. But, at the end of the day, we want all of our employees at work, and, and we're seeing an issue with this right now. And we, we are afraid that it is going to get worse as time goes on. Um, we have to, the numbers drop, but...
Well, I just, I, I agree with you, and I just think it's a shame that if I'm at work and my partner tests positive, I have to go home and burn my vacation time. What happens if the poor employee doesn't have any time because he just started to work here? You know, I think it's a shame, but on the other hand, I can understand some of the consequences related to doing that. You know, it, it would be a logistic nightmare to try to keep tabs with who was tested positive at work, who, you know, who tested positive at home or whatever. Um, but to start with, I think we should do everything that we can to make sure that our employees are vaccinated. And I would, I would love for the manager to put a, a program together with an incentive of some sort, trying to encourage our, uh, employees to become vaccinated.
Well, you know, I think that an employee, if, that's their right if they don't want to get vaccinated, but they should be required, when they come to work, to wear a mask. And, I mean, that should be number one, if you don't want to get vaccinated. But then, you know, I, I don't see where we should, this is just my opinion, um, give somebody a $250 incentive to get vaccinated when I think, what was it, $100 that the government was just doing, it was $125 and then to $100?
How much do you think it costs the city when those five employees go home and you have to bring five more in and work them overtime to cover for them?
Well, that's what I'm saying. They should be required to wear a mask at work if they don't want to get vaccinated, and then they should be required to get that test and bring it back into their employer, if they don't want to get vaccinated.
Sonya, um, if I wear a mask every day at work and I'm still exposed to someone to test positive, what would you do?
If you wear a mask every day and you're exposed, okay, so the CDC guidance only has an exception for K through 12, okay? So, if they're sitting beside a classmate, they're exposed, they're both wearing masks, they're wearing them consistently and correctly, they don't have to quarantine. But the guidance outside of that, for the rest of us, it's still considered a close contact.
So, even if an employee is wearing a mask and his partner tests positive, the employee wearing a mask still has, is close contact and has to be quarantined?
Even if both of them are in a mask. Now, the only difference, Alderman Astor, to that would be if you have public safety wearing an N95. If you're wearing an N95 and you're exposed to a confirmed positive, it's not considered an exposure.
Are all of our public safety people wearing N95s? I didn't think so. They're kind of hard to find, aren't they?
On works ago, um...
Okay. So, I mean, I, is, well, I'll ask Foster this question. Other communities that you know of and been talking to doing the same thing with the incentive?
We, we've seen larger communities, we've seen Wake County, um, all the areas around that, we've seen Charlotte Mecklenburg. Of course, those areas are, are blown up. We haven't seen anyone on the eastern part of the state yet. Uh, so, we just wanted to give you an idea of what's
What do you think we should do?
My personal opinion is that if you don't want to have that vaccine, you're not going to have it, no matter, no matter what we offer you. Um, but if there's someone that's on, on the fence and we can encourage them to, to get that vaccine, I think it'll be worth it when, when you look at, once you're out, that's 10, up to 10 days of sick time of vacation that you're going to lose because of this.
Do you feel that people that don't want to be vaccinated should be required to take tests?
I think if, if we start going down that path, it's going to be even more difficult for human resources to keep up with, with something like that. And I really, I'm going to speak for Sonya because she may hit me after this, uh, meeting, but I, I think that will be too much of a burden on HR to keep up with that, that part.
So, the incentive will be proactive to go ahead and try to move forward with the incentive?
That's correct. And of course, in, any amount, I mean, we, we just, we just threw out what we've seen across the state, but, um, we've got a whole division right now that's completely impacted, and it's making it difficult.
The math speaks for itself. If you have five men that you have to try to replace, that's one man causes epidemic, you know? Do the math.
Well, I'm not sure how long you could stay without a whole division out, which is what you have now. Um, I'm not sure what the consequences to the city would be with them being out, but I can tell you in police and fire, if you get three or four of them on the same shift out, you've got the backfield of those people, and it's going to cost you time and a half to do that. So, and I, I think a week or so of, of that kind of, has that happened, chief in chief? It has happened? How many have you had out at one, any one given time? And how, what's a team? So, you've had six people out at, at one time, and you had the backfield all that? That's, at two times, that's 12 people you've had at backfield? Well, it would make good sense then to, let's work with doing an incentive program. I mean, it's costing us a whole lot more paying time and a half. Jeff, what's the hospital doing?
What do you mean?
Do they require any employees to be vaccinated?
Not at this point, no. Sonya, I have a question. What percentage of our employees of the 400 and some odd that's on our payroll now, what percentage are vaccinated and not?
We, we don't track that because we really didn't have a reason to track it. Now, if we were going to implement the incentive program, of course, I would recommend that we, we get the vaccine cards. But the only time, Alderman Odom, that we ask for those vaccine cards is when we call to do the contact tracing, because that's going to determine what path we take, if you're vaccinated or unvaccinated. So, I, I don't have an answer.
So, I think, um, with any decision, you should be educated before you make a decision on something. And that would be something that I would think we would have to have in order to make an educated decision. I think also needing to know by department what that looks like, those that have interaction with the public or close proximity to other employees versus somebody who could work remotely from home. Um, it's just a lot of information I think we would need before we would need to make a decision.
Are you allowing people who can work remotely from home to continue to work so that they don't have to lose their sick time?
I don't, at this time, I don't think we've had very many employees that, that can work remotely, which have been
That have been exposed or
Exposed, that's correct.
I have a question, this is Alderman Harris. Um, is there any, what's, what's the, um, the situation when you are vaccinated and, um, catch COVID from an individual in, um, the, the same scenario, but you're still vaccinated? You're, you still have to suffer and utilize, um, your sick leave and all of that, even though they were vaccinated, they wearing their masks, but a partner that they're working with, they contracted it from?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. So, even if you've been vaccinated, if you happen to be exposed to a positive and you contract COVID, then yes, ma'am, you would have to be quarantined and subject to using your leave cap.
Okay. Well, just my thought process is, is, um, you know, I, I agree with Alderman Odom. Um, I think you would need, you know, as much information as possible, um, in regards to how you want to move about this. One, because people have a right to decide whether they want to be vaccinated or not. Uh, my only thing would be if, you know, if at anything, you know, just the recommendation of, you know, continuing to wear a mask and, you know, the, the three W's, um, because again, we can't force people to get, um, vaccinated and put them. Um, in regards to a sen- an incentive, I would definitely have to see, um, you know, the numbers and how that necessarily would work out, um, with all the information before I can like vote on that. But, um, i- is there, are we able to, temp? Do we have temp people on standby if, um, you know, things like this continue to happen and it gets worse and people are, even within a sentence, people are still not wanting to get vaccinated? Um, is there temps where we're able to get people hired expeditiously, um, on a temp agent, temp, uh, like temp agency basis?
I, I think that would all depend on the position, um, that's affected. Like, we wouldn't be able to have temps for police or fire.
Okay.
But yeah, if, if the board would like to give us any direction, that's fine. If you don't, that, that's fine as well. We just wanted to bring it up for, for information to see what, what the, what the temperature was.
So, what was it, do you want him to see, Jeff, the number of people that we've already had vaccinated?
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to see, because if you're telling us that, hypothetically, 90% of the staff's vaccinated, you're talking about offering incentive to 10%, you know, you have to weigh that decision, because then you can talk about going back and, and giving everybody the other 90% that's already had it, uh, incentive. Um, I, we're, we're not healthcare experts, and I think one thing that this pandemic has proved is that some of the experts are not experts. And there's a lot of unknowns with this, um, you know, just because like Sonya said, you can be vaccinated, still contracted. You can be vaccinated and still spread it. Um, I just think that, um, this is a learning process, it has been so for a long time. Um, I will tell you that, uh, some of the private sector, what they are doing, uh, before, they would pay, get paid leave if somebody needs to go out and quarantine. Um, what I heard, one company, it's not the one I work for, what I heard one company is doing is, now, if you choose to be vaccinated and you're contracted and you have to be out because of it, then they don't charge you your sick leave or your time for that.
That's a good point.
If you, if you choose as your choice not to be vaccinated and you contracted and have to be out, then that's on you. That's a decision that you made, so.
That's a good idea.
That might be the medium that we could, you know, the
That would certainly encourage you to get
There may be some, I know public and private's difference, there may be some legal issues there, but that's for you guys to, high paid employees to figure out.
Can you
So, from a legal perspective, but I do recall seeing one municipality, and I can't recall where it was, but one municipality is doing just that. So, what do we?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, so how then, how will we treat those individuals that is newly hired and don't have that time? Um, the books for to stay out for sick leave?
Right. So, so we've had a, a situation or two where someone has had to, to be out and they were in the probationary period, and then what I do is I approve that they use their annual leave time under the hardship provisions, because otherwise they couldn't use it.
So, then, then they have to pay, owe you to?
They just use it, just allow, allow them to, to use it even though they're in their probationary period.
Very good.
Well, I like that idea that Jeff brought up about, you know, paying them if they get, if they're out, if they're vaccinated and, and not. I, I just, if, and let them be on their own time if they're not vaccinated. So, can you, can you kind of think about some of this stuff and put something together and let us
We sure can. We'll, we'll get some information. We'll have a conversation with department heads in the morning as well and bring something back to the board.
Yeah, but I think we should do everything we can and encourage our people to get vaccinated. You know, other than that, ball's in your court, I reckon. Thank you.
That's why it gets the big bucks.
That's right.
All right, one, one other item, and we'll end on a very good note. The mayor and I had the opportunity to go to Greensboro this weekend, uh, to attend, uh, uh, award ceremony. Our city clerk, Brenda Blanco, was awarded the clerk of the year by the North Carolina Association of Municipal Clerks. So, I want to say we're very proud of Brenda. Um, that, that's an award that is given by her peers throughout the state, and so Brenda, congratulations.
Congratulations. Okay, anything else?
That's it, sir.
I've got a new business. You know, I was up in Greensboro every weekend, and, uh, it's very exciting to see the whole state of North Carolina, the municipal clerks, and, um, Brenda's really held in very high regard on the state level. And Brenda, you, right now, are, are you a board, own the board directors?
I am.
And, um, so we, we're very proud of you. And, you know, since you have become city clerk, you've taken numerous educational opportunities, and, uh, um, I'm not quite, I can't, your acronyms, could you tell me, or could you tell us what they are?
North Carolina certified municipal clerk, international certified municipal clerk, and international mask on municipal clerk.
Yeah. There was one, and Foster and I were, we were going back trying to remember, but I, I think the president had indicated that you were of, of recently or, or only, you were only one of the state had two designations, is that correct? I didn't quite catch that. I actually do have a video of it, but...
There's probably a lot she said that I didn't catch, I was surprised.
And she was surprised. And, uh, we didn't, Foster and I didn't know quite how we were going to play this up, so we were, we were hiding behind columns, so she wasn't seeing it still. I, I guess if she had seen this earlier, it'd be a little, you know, hard to figure out what, what we were doing up there. We weren't playing golf. Um, we're going to go to business. I, I do want to say, uh, you know, on this whole subject matter of COVID-19, that, you know, easy outs, just keep mouth, mouth shut and let others do talking. Um, early on, I felt like set example. Um, I, I have been vaccinated and, um, but I don't say a lot about that, because I think it's a, a very individual, um, decision. And again, uh, the severity of it and the unknown and all these things. The, the thing I, I, I kind of am remiss about in this whole discussion is whether or not the board, as Alderman Astor has indicated, and, and I am indicating, um, at some point wants to provide further leadership as far as what we think the public should do. If it were on me, I'd say go get vaccinated. But I have folks in my own family that are very strongly the other way about it and are very concerned and, um, are scared to get vaccinated. And, you know, those are personal decisions of loved ones of mine, and I respect them. So, you know, these are trying times. Um, cost benefit ratio of, uh, of employees getting vaccinated or not, I don't know. Um, how many are vaccinated? We don't know. I, I would say probably 35, 40%. I don't think it's 75 rated, but then I could be wrong. So, again, um, the thing is, is that to me, on this whole subject matter, um, nationwide, as we look at the statistical modeling of the number of, of, of patients in hospitals and the, the resources and such, um, it, it obviously is stressing our nation in more ways than one. And to me, uh, overall, based on a lot smarter people than myself when it comes to medicine, um, I'm going to take the high road on getting the vaccination, and again, I'm going to encourage others to do it. So, um, for those that don't, and employees that don't want to, and, you know, this, this city, the town of Beaufort, I, I don't really particularly know that I would agree with it, but I think they have gone to mandatory mask, uh, of the employees. Now,
Citywide.
Sir?
Citywide.
If, why not, that's constitutional or not? Again, I'm not a lawyer. So, um, I, I really appreciate you bringing this subject up and the discussion we had, and I'm sure in the next couple weeks, the board probably And I'm sure in the next couple of weeks, the board will probably look more into this and we would encourage staff to give us more information and we'll try to go. But I guess I'm going to bring it in for landing that the problem with whether or not employees are getting vaccinated and I probably have something to do with what leadership and staff are telling each other or telling employees. Now, we certainly have not, as the board told the staff, that they all go do it. And obviously, upper level staff has not told the entire populace of the city in New Bern, four hundred and sixty employees to go get vaccinated. So again, these are trying times. Keep praying on it and do what you think's right in your heart. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Mayor, I was going to say, Alderman Harris, to what you were saying, maybe it's possible to actually hold a vaccination clinic on site. Maybe, maybe it might be that some people, you know, they can't go and get vaccinated. Maybe they're busy on the weekends, you know, and they got to go to work. What if we're able to do something like that to hold, hold a vaccination clinic on site at these locations? Or a location that conducive, city hall, somewhere where it's specifically for employees that want to get vaccinated?
Yes, ma'am. Well, again, you know, some of those clinics that were being held, there was quite a bit of participation. And then toward the end, there was hardly anybody coming to them. So again, we, let's do some research into that and that's something that we might want to do, Alderman Harris.
Yeah, mayor, before we move on, since we're still on the subject, Foster, how do we, until we get more of research on this, until we decide what we're going to do, whenever. So just say for instance, if an employee's vaccinated, another employee unvaccinated, and they spread that COVID to that vaccinated employee, should we not have that person, that employee that's vaccinated have to use their sick leave? I know, but I'm saying, but we didn't conclude whether or not. I know, but from that, from tonight up until that time, it comes back to us. How are we going to treat that vaccinated employee if they contract COVID from some, from an employee that's not vaccinated? We shouldn't have, we shouldn't hold them having to use their sick leave because they did, they followed protocol and they did what they had to do and got vaccinated.
Well, let us come back at the next meeting and provide you with some good information.
Okay, so if an employee gets COVID during this process of coming back, within a two week span, we're going to still make them use their sick leave?
That is what we have been doing since January first of this year, once that funding is done over available.
Okay, so it's going to be business starting with Alderman Bingo.
Well, now, I want to say a couple of things. Not relative to the city, but relative to the city, and that has been on my mind lately. And I want to address all of our military personnel that live in our city and in the surrounding areas. And I want to thank them for their service. These are difficult days to continue to see what we see on the TV and what's going on in Afghanistan. And because we are such a military friendly community and the importance of these heroes to us every day, that I just wanted to make a very public statement of support. And we are with you and we understand the price of freedom and that they willingly went and served in this country and that their service is not in vain in any way, shape or form. And I just want to thank every military person in our city, in our county, and in our state that puts their life on line every day so that all of us can sit here tonight, can sit in the audience and could walk freely on our street. So it's been bothering me, it's been on my mind. And I just want everybody to know that I am praying for the people of Afghanistan. I hope we can get all of our citizens out safely and any of those Afghans that want to get out and get away from the tyranny of this new regime. So I know it's not a city issue, but I believe it is because this is our city and these are our citizens that are here protecting us. So that's pretty much what I wanted to say under new business tonight.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Harris.
Thank you, mayor. Two things, I just wanted to inform everybody that Van was sent off, the former employee that used to work for the city. He was sent off by his family. It was a beautiful service. You were able to view it on YouTube. A lot of friends and family came out and spoke good words and I just want to let you guys know that. The other question or concern I have is that Margaret sent us an email in regards to the possibility of applying for the Golden Leaf Grant in regards, we're requesting fifty thousand dollars and this is to be in part of the Vault Center. And I think we were, we emailed and I guess it was suggested that we have this as a discussion. Not sure what the discussion would be, but just want to know how do we move forward with this process? Because it is a grant, it's time sensitive and it needs to be signed. So I just wanted to kind of know where we're at in that process with this grant. I know that Alderman Bingo extended an olive branch in regards to the community kitchen and the whole Vault Center. We did have a good meeting and we ended it on the note that we, we're going to do everything that we can to work together so everybody wins. And I think this fifty thousand dollars is an added value. And just kind of want to know where we are in that process of getting it signed so we can move to the next step of this grant.
So Alderman Harris, I will say this, at the July thirteenth meeting, Alderman Best did bring up requesting Ms. Shields and Jeff Ruggieri and Amanda Owen is selling to move forward with grants. At that time, there was a roll call vote and the motion on the floor failed. And so currently, staff has no direction on moving forward. If the board would like to provide staff direction to proceed with applying for grants for commissary kitchen of the Vault Center, we're more than happy to do anything the board wants us to do.
Okay, I think for me in this regard, I think that if we're, if we apply for it, the grant will move forward with this process. The commissary kitchen, the Vault Center project, like I stated in the email, if we get to a point where, you know, we're approved for it and we get to a point where it's not going to work out and we may need to look for another location, we have the ability to apply for a change of scope for this money, for another location to utilize it for the same way where that we're applying for the grant. And then if that's not the case, then we have the ability to send the money back. But I, this is going to be the second time that we're up for this and have a high probability of getting this money and it's a benefit to the project. So I don't know why we wouldn't give the board direction or give staff direction to move forward with getting the grant. It's going to help the project.
I got a question. Foster, I was kind of surprised when I saw that grant because I thought on July thirteenth, we had voted not to go in that direction. Who's authorized the grant? Who authorized writing the grant?
I'm only aware of one grant that was applied for before the board changed the direction on the April thirteenth meeting. And that, what was the name of that grant? Cannon Foundation Grant, so.
Okay, so that's the grant that Margaret was looking for signatures for the other day?
No, no, that's the Golden Leaf Grant that she was looking for the other day.
And who authorized that grant? Pardon me? I thought the board direction was no on July thirteenth. So this grant was started prior to July thirteenth? I can't hear you.
They're talking about the Golden Leaf Grant. Cannon Grant was.
Yeah, I'm talking about the Golden Leaf Grant.
The Golden Leaf Grant, I was sitting in the harbor, was ready to go. I think it was a result of the meeting that Alderman Harris, Alderman Best and Alderman Bingo had and that with the college and other representatives of the restaurant industry that we were going to work together to find a kind of partnership between the college and the city on sharing a space. And I think the question was, after that meeting, which was very positive, as Alderman Harris said, what's that? We were asking to see if we're going to move forward with that grant. That's all. It's been sitting, ready to go for months.
So we just need direction from the board tonight to proceed on with this grant, regardless of whether we work out some type of structure with the college for sharing the space or not?
The only concern I have, and again, the meeting was, it was a good, positive meeting. I will say that. We got a lot of information, but it is still lacking the information that I've been trying to get for months and months and months. And that is, what is the cost? What is it going to cost us to operate? What is it going to cost? Because I still believe that the community college has the money in hand. They go to work. It doesn't cost us one penny to go in there. We've given them the property. But if I could see some numbers, some statistics, I can't get that. The second thing is, I want to see a copy of this Golden Leaf Grant because the grant that was sent to the Cannon Foundation has inconsistencies in it. Has, as far as I'm concerned, has misinformation in it because it talks about that we've partnered with the hospital. We have not partnered with the hospital. That they have not, from my understanding, and I've called out there, we have not been a partner. We're writing things and grants that are not correct. And I understand that we have to fluff up things sometimes. I get it. But before we send off a grant, I'd like to at least view the copy of it and see what's written and see what we're going to be held to. Because once we write a grant and it's submitted, we're going to be held to something. So I believe we would be held to something in that grant.
Is there, Ms. Margaret, is there something that you can share, some light on that Cannon Grant that she was speaking of, the language in it?
I think by partnering, we meant that the hospital, it could have their employees use the facility for training. That's what we discussed.
Well, it says in the thing here, it says, "With a working lab in place, the city with support from Craven Community College and Carolina East will provide training for prospective workforce in the hospitality, environmental services industry." Well, that, that is not necessarily true because if we're going to do a commissary kitchen, the community college will have limited scope because depending, again, I don't have this information. How many hours is it open to a commissary kitchen? How many hours is it open to the community college? They can't get in there, you know, if somebody's got to prep in the afternoon for an event in the evening or they're trying to do something, you know, how do we schedule this? These are the kind of questions I'm trying to get answered. And, you know, it says Carolina East will provide feedback on the workers hired from the commissary kitchen program. Yes, they will, if, but it's not a commissary kitchen program. It would be from a community college training program because those people will not be. A commissary kitchen is to have people prep and cook and do that, not to necessarily be trained. That would be a training program through the community college. So again, I just, you know, I would like to at least see the grant before we send it out. If it's been prepared that long, it was a letter of intent too.
It's a letter of intent.
So we haven't even, so we haven't started the grant. Is that correct?
No, you have to submit the letter of intent first.
Okay, so we haven't even started.
And then if the letter of intent is approved, then you can move forward with the grant.
Okay.
So.
I think that is what was confusing.
And the Cannon Foundation Grant was written before.
Yes, we didn't know that.
You know, back in February.
Well, because you uploaded all the documents, April, the ninth was all uploaded, so.
Right, but it was written in February and then it was delayed. And so, yes, it was finally submitted in early April.
Sabrina?
Yes, sir.
You seem that like you're an expert on a commissary kitchen.
I'm not an expert, but I've been around for a long.
Explain to me what the idea is here.
Well, no, it's not that. And I would rather say fewer things than more things. But a commissary kitchen is a place where people who are in the industry, in the food industry, can prep food, can cook food, can bake food, can prepare jams and jellies, can do whatever in a kitchen that is certified by the health department. So it has all the requirements for safety and health precautions. It has proper cooling and proper storage, dry storage, cold storage, so that things are kept at a temperature. The health department requires you have certain temperatures for food, either cold or hot. So that's the basis of having a commissary kitchen. And what happens is when you are a food truck, push cart, food cart, whatever you want to call that, you must have a certified kitchen to work out of. You can't just say, well, my house is clean and I'll follow all those rules and you can come in my house and check it out. You can't do that. You have to have what the health department signifies as a commissary kitchen. What most food trucks in this area do is they contract through a restaurant or some kind of provider to rent the space or to use these certified kitchens that have been certified by the health department.
And question, how many, how many of these food trucks are residents of the city of New Bern?
That I don't know. I can't answer. I believe when we were on the phone call and Alderman Best, if you may remember, I tried to write down as many notes as I could. Seventeen, I believe the health department said seventeen permits, but that did not include push carts.
And how much would one of these kitchens cost?
To a fit kitchen, anywhere between two and three hundred thousand dollars.
So let me get this straight. We're going to spend, we're being asked to spend three hundred thousand dollars of the city's.
We're trying to get grants is what we're in the process of doing.
Well, we're going to be asked to spend two hundred thousand dollars, provide a location. Who's going to manage it to make sure that we don't get sued if somebody gets?
Those are the questions that I have. In some of the conversations, and Alderman Best, please jump in if I'm saying something incorrect. It was mentioned that, of course, Amanda Owen Salin has had the experience of running the kitchen at the Havlock Tourist Center. Now that, you can call it a commissary kitchen, but it not necessarily was the case. What happened was it was used for caterers. Caterers would come into the tourist center and if they had a catering event, they could prep and cook and do whatever. The convention center in New Bern does the same exact thing.
Well, Amanda's job is not kitchen manager.
But this is what, if you read the grants, it lists Amanda as the person who would operate at management, manage it.
Well, wouldn't that be, wouldn't that be a?
As you're asking, I don't have that information.
Okay, well, I'm just kind of thinking here.
Do you want to raise your question?
Yes. Who are the restaurants in town that allows the individuals to go there to prep their food? How many?
You know, I'm not a hundred, I could tell you two that I know for sure and that would be Blackbeard's because we had a gentleman on the phone call with us that has a food truck scene sold and he uses Blackbeard's as his commissary kitchen.
How much do they charge?
Five hundred dollars a month he pays.
Unless as often as he likes to go there.
Correct.
So on average, I think.
He says he's gone four times, about four times a week, he goes to prep, he prepare his food.
So videos said it would be fifteen, twenty dollars an hour if you establish this. And then anybody that's running a food truck would run up more than five hundred dollars, seven hundred dollars.
They could potentially. So again, I just want to make sure we have correct information.
I listened to.
There's one, yeah, and you can listen on there. There's one commissary, public commissary kitchen, I believe it's in Burgaw. And again, Amanda did some research on it and brought back my notes. It said that they charged about twenty dollars, fifteen, twenty dollars an hour. So they charged by the hour. So again, we talked to the food truck. He said two to three, probably three hours it took him to prep, maybe some cleanup time. So say four hours, twenty dollars an hour, times four, that's eighty dollars. Times four, if he's prepping four times a week, that's three hundred and twenty dollars in one week. So that person would end up paying more. But then we kind of came back, if you watch the video, if you, we kind of came back and said, well, there'd be a sliding scale potentially. So again, that doesn't.
What kind of slide?
I don't know. That's what I'm saying. I need, we need more information. I don't know, that's what I'm saying, I need, we need more information.
This is, I have a statement, we did in that meeting, this is Alderman Harris speaking, state that all of this information was gonna be provided in our next meeting in three weeks, where we all three, and so, this is simply a letter of intent, again, on numerous occasions since I've been on the board, we've had asked for changes scope when we received the grant or in that grant process, that's nothing new, we're experts in that, all they're asking is to sign a letter of intent, because that's the benefit, if we get this fifty thousand dollars to go towards the upkeep, I mean, the outfit of the vault center, if we agree that it can work out, we haven't determined that yet in this meeting from the olive branch that Alderman Bingo supplied us on July thirteenth, so I'm just saying, and hoping that the city, interim city manager and the mayor can sign the letter of intent so that they can move forward, we may not even get a proof for it, I just don't want it to be held up, because lack of information that is known that we're bringing back in three weeks.
Well, I didn't think the community college...
Just the other, the last thing is, in that meeting, if anyone wants to go back and watch it, the gentleman did state that there's, there are some food trucks that are able to prep for a week in advance, so the numbers and the numbers and the amount are gonna be different, we can't compare ourselves to another city and how they do it, the whole point of the meeting is to develop what this would be based on the information that's being prevented, so, provided, so, and that's supposed to be in three weeks, well, we're going, two weeks and a half now since the meeting was last week, so, I don't understand how this has anything to do with signing a letter of intent.
Well, because I think fifty thousand dollars is a drop in the bucket, I think when you, I mean, I'll just put it to you like this, I'm not going to vote to spend fifty thousand, a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand, whatever the number may be, to build a kitchen, and for the city of New Bern to manage the kitchen, and for us to be responsible for the cleaning of the kitchen, and us to be responsible for the insurance asked to go in the kitchen, so somebody can go in there, cook themselves some hot dogs or whatever it is they're gonna cook, put them on their food truck, carry them out in the public, and sell them, and put the money in their pocket. Now, I just don't think, that's like me, that's like Johnny Ray, when he became Mr. World or Mr. America, what it was, asking the city to build him a gym and let him go in there and use it to work out in, I mean, it's the, it's the same thing, what's gonna stop the next person from coming in and saying the same thing? I need this, will the city build it so I can use it? I'm just, I think this is a private industry, and besides that, you've already told me that if we do this, we're gonna be taking money out of the pockets of some private businesses.
I'm confused on that statement, because the CNI plan that we got a grant for, for four hundred thousand dollars, and the community asked for was a city market, so this was already part of the plan, and I don't think someone's just coming in there willy-nilly, it's about entrepreneurship and supporting not just standalone restaurants, but also individuals that do have products that they wanna be able to prep and sell, that was the conversation from the beginning, so we understood from when you voted in April and in July that you were against it, but again, Alderman Bingo supported us and provided an olive branch, and that's the reason why we're having these meetings, so, I'm just confused on why this will hinder us signing a letter of intent, because we can, I mean, we're not paying, if we're getting grant money, we're not paying, and if we get a proof for the Cannon, that's what, sixty grand, so we're close to two hundred thousand, so there's not money that we're putting in to outfit it, and then we're also discussing the other process with it.
I didn't think the community college would allow us to do this in their kitchen, because it was supporting private industry.
If we put the kitchen in, that's different, that's different, if we put the kitchen in and we pay for the kitchen, it's different than their funds, their funds to put kitchen equipment are strictly for training, they cannot do any for-profit business in a kitchen that they fund, and that's...
Alderman Bass has been trying to say, so go ahead, Alderman.
No, I'm just listening, that's why, that's why we formed, well, Alderman Harris covered it about the LOI form, but that's why we formed this subcommittee, Alderman Astor, so that we can talk more in depth and get more information, and at our last meeting, Dr. Stacks was like, you know, hey, by no means, we're gonna always be a partnership, regardless of what we as a board of Alderman want to do, so we had some really productive conversation there, and I think that, you know, moving forward, if we can, through grant funding, be able to, you know, have this kitchen come to fruition, which, as Alderman Harris said, this was, this commissary kitchen, catalyst kitchen, or however you wanna say it, was part of the initial plan of the CNI plan, the Choice Neighborhood Plan, and we would have already had that kitchen upfitted if that two hundred thousand dollar tobacco grant, trust grant, hadn't been denied, so, I mean, here we are, still working with grants, trying to get the kitchen upfitted, so I, my thing is, I can understand if we were asking for city taxpayers' money to outfit this kitchen, but we're trying to do it through grants.
Oh, well, that's a lot of, that's a lot of money to try to get for grants, but my question is, after that, is, who's gonna manage it?
Well, that's why, in our next meeting coming up, more information will be brought back to us, Amanda, Jeff, and their staff, they're, she's gonna bring us back, I think it was a three or five year budget plan for this commissary kitchen, so, I don't know if, maybe you need some information from Amanda or Jeff to maybe bring you up to part of where we're at with this, because apparently, you don't really have all the details about it, so...
Apparently, I don't, but you know what, I don't, you're gonna have a hard time convincing me to spend taxpayers' dollars on building a kitchen that somebody else is gonna go in and use, and we're gonna have to manage it and everything else too, and...
It's gonna be a joint effort with the college.
Pardon me?
It's gonna be a joint effort with Craven Community College, if we get to that point, so this is...
It won't be a joint project, they will come in, if they can, and do training classes.
Well, I mean joint, I mean shared space, shared, that's what we were trying to initially, shared space.
Well...
To share the space for the programs, for the, you know, entrepreneurship.
I hope they can answer that at the next thing, because based on what I was originally, you know...
I think we'll just wait until you have your next meeting, but in the interim...
It's supposed to happen September, let's see.
I, Mr. Mayor, I think it's very important that any department, or anybody that's applying for grants, it needs to be run through the city manager's office, I mean, before we applied for grants, when I was department head, before we applied for any grant, we had to get the city manager's initial on the grant approving it, and that way, he knows what's going on, I think that's just courtesy to the poor city manager to know what's happening.
Well, I wanna ask another question too, 'cause I know at our board meeting, Alderman Odom said that he was gonna check with the hospital, and did you get an opportunity to check with the hospital for the partnership, and what was the results of that, if you mind sharing, or if there was any conversation?
Yeah, the hospital will do exactly what I suggested they would do, is they would support the college, if the college has a class to teach food prep service, the college, the hospital is gonna be in the same situation with, the hospital will be in the same situation as the college, is that we would not be providing funding for a for-profit entity, and right now, maybe somebody can help me out, I think, I think there's two paths that we can go down, one path is, the city continue to try to get grants to pay for the kitchen to be installed, and then the city is going to have to manage and provide oversight of that facility, maybe the college will partner in some form or fashion to do some training classes there, I think that's option one, option two is, the college has the funding to install the kitchen now, they can start classes once it's upfit, and go ahead and start training food prep service, is that the two options that we have? Okay, thank you.
Well, are we holding the college up?
I think the college is probably waiting, you know, their HVAC program out there, they never knew it would take off like it did, but they, they were in control of it, not the county or the city, they did, and it found a real niche, and now the HVAC is really taking off, the, the system, when the city knew when we first started talking about having our, what's the name of it, out at the community college, where we do virtual realities?
Simulator.
Simulator.
Senior moment.
We wanted to control that, we wanted to say what hours it was run, and who could use it, and we wanted to partner with the college, and that took quite a bit of discussion, and it finally turned out that, in order to make that happen, the college was gonna be in control of that, and I think probably the holistic end result of that has been quite a success, I just see the college, if they are not in control of the programming, I don't think it's gonna be as successful, the number of potential students that would go out to a college-based food program is probably exponentially gonna be very successful, if you, if you do this and it runs the college off, and the college goes and puts the program back at the, at the college, or if it puts it in Havlot, and we were to do this, how many, how many food truck, how many food trucks do we, are we in the educational land is, are we in the rental end of giving somebody somewhere to prepare food?
Neither.
I mean, so, the end result for me, just like with the simulator, is how many, how many police officers, first responders can be trained to make Eastern North Carolina more successful? Yes, I said Eastern North Carolina, I didn't say New Bern, and the reason I said Eastern North Carolina is because it's state money through the community college, and when we talk about trying to help folks that wanna get into the food industry, when you say Craven Community College, you're saying Eastern North Carolina, based in New Bern, and my concern is that if you get these grants and you outfit the kitchen, and it's two hundred thousand dollars, and where's the sustainability of the funding mechanism for ten or twenty years out? Is the Cannon Group, is the Tobacco Trust gonna fund this one time for the initial startup, and then is the city in New Bern gonna foot the bill, and then if it's just for the city in New Bern, not for Eastern North Carolina, or are we gonna say, two years down the road, we've got ninety, ninety food trucks in the area now, and that's too many, are we gonna shut the program down? Just a lot of unknowns there, I just, I think the safe harbor for the city in New Bern is to partner with college, and colleges in this business, if somebody eats a barbecue sandwich and gets sick, the deep pockets says they're gonna come back to where the food was prepared, not to the food truck, so, I just...
I have some comments, the way that we're comparing this, it don't add up to me, because we keep talking about taxpayer dollars, right now, we're not using any taxpayer dollars, and Mayor, you keep bringing up the simulator, but didn't it take a hundred thousand dollars of our money, which would be taxpayer money, to outfit that, and then we gave it over to the college for them to determine and schedule on when we would be able to utilize it, and then also, we have a pool, where we have resident and non-residents that come there and utilize that pool, we're in this conversation as though that these entrepreneurs or individuals are not going to make money, so, for me, I just want better understanding, it sounds like we only care about a certain population that live in the city of New Bern, and that's people that wanna work in the restaurant industry, it seems like we're not supportive of entrepreneurs, especially if this was something that was requested and talked about for months on end with the CNI, and I know many a times when we apply for grants, we utilize the CNI as a foundation of where we wanna go with progress in our city, and I'm confused, because we had a meeting, and Alderman Bass and Alderman Bingo and myself are coming here, and we come back and present the information, the college said that they're willing to partner, restaurants are willing to partner, we haven't gotten to the point where it's not working, as of right now, we're working together, this is just a letter of intent, if we can't partner where it's gonna work out in the vault center, it was a suggestion that was made by another Alderman, I'm not sure if it was Alderman Bingo, so correct me if I'm wrong, of finding another location within the city to still do the same project, so my concern is, if we do a letter of intent, it doesn't work out, but we find another location, a change of scope, we have this funding, and if we can continue to get the funding, then we're not using any taxpayer dollars, then when it comes to managing it, the health department in the meeting said that they get permits for this all the time, we're a beautiful city, everybody wants to come to New Bern, so I think that having it open to city residents and non-city residents is part of what the sliding scale and the structure would be, but I don't want to lose out on the possibility of getting fifty thousand dollars for this project, or a project in this, in this capacity, when we can do a change of scope if it doesn't work at the vault center, so we're all winning, you understand what I'm saying, like, we all wanna win, we want the college to be able to train, we want individuals to get trained, we're about the education, but we also wanna create a space for entrepreneurs, if we find out that after this meeting in three weeks, it doesn't work, we still have the ability to find another location to make it work, that's, that's, that's the plan, is trying to make this work and come together, where everybody wins, where all citizens feel that their voices and things that they do are important, so we're not trying to just spend taxpayer dollars, we haven't even incorporated that in the conversation as of yet, so we're just asking for the board to be okay with this being signed, so that, again, if it does not work at the physical vault location, and we find another location within the city, it's still a project that can move forward, that's just, that's, I don't know if that's still a possibility, I just don't wanna lose out on fifty thousand dollars, and I, I mean, I don't wanna, you know, keep the conversation going, I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm just saying, everybody could win in this situation if we work together.
Okay, with you saying all of that, and I just want to ask, if any other board members have any questions, or any other comments, if we can just get some direction here tonight from the board, whether it's a yes or no, to move forward with trying to get this LOI with Margaret and Amanda and Jeffrey Jerry's office, moving forward to get grant funding, if we can just go ahead and discuss that, if there's any more discussion on the LOI form to be signed, or give direction from this board, what do we need to do?
I have a quick question, the for-profit, so that grant would be okay for profit, correct?
Yes, Margaret, she shared all the information with us at a previous board meeting, yeah?
So, 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 once the money comes in, it's gonna be a continual flow of things, so who's gonna pay for that then?
Continual flow of, are you saying years?
Operation, the operation of the business, you know?
We will?
We, we, we have another meeting coming up, and Amanda and her department, they're supposed to be bringing that information back to us, the subcommittee group that Alderman Bingo, myself, and Harris is on.
Can I ask a question about the letter of intent? Just help me to understand, again, Margaret come up here, I just wanna make sure I understand something, so, right now, a letter of intent says you intend to apply for the grant?
Correct, yes.
And so, when is this letter of intent due?
Thursday.
Okay, Thursday, so when you send this off, then, when do you have to submit the application?
Well, the board will meet and review the LOI.
So they may not accept?
Correct, they may not accept it, the board meets, I believe, in September, and then, if it is accepted, will, they'll, will be able to apply for their October deadline for the full grant application.
But at that point, if the board takes a different thing, we don't have to apply, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm okay then, if that's the case, you know, a letter of intent to me is nothing more than, you know, putting it out there, letting the people at Tobacco Trust, I mean, what is that gonna do? We can stop the process, let's get the information, because I feel very confident... Let's get the information, because I feel very confident that the information is going to show that this is not going to be beneficial to the city of New Bern to do this because of the cost of the operation and trying to provide somebody, and the cost to the person trying to work in there. I don't think it's gonna, I think we're going to find out that information, and we'll have that in two weeks.
So we're going to continue to delay a situation where restaurants right now across this city are closing certain days of the week because they can't get help? We hear people that they don't make enough because they get hired at $8 or $9 an hour. And I think I heard somebody at some point in this conversation say that when they go through the college and they get this certification, that they get paid more because they have some sort of certification. So we're going to delay this whole process when, Mr. Attorney, where are we with the lease on the Vault Center with the college?
Waiting to hear back from the EDA on some questions that they raised.
Okay.
Any day now.
So any day now, we could move forward with the plan for the college to install the kitchen and start that process, but we're going to hope and wait and see if we get grant money for this kitchen so some entrepreneurs can have somewhere to prepare their food. Amanda, they said you ran this concept in Havlot? Or did I misunderstand that?
No, there was not a commissary kitchen. I ran a commercial kitchen in Havlot.
So where's the closest commissary kitchen in the state of North Carolina?
Bergau, I believe, is the closest one.
And there's one more in Asheville?
There are several across the state. Many of them are kind of more in larger cities and may either have a kind of a public kind of backing or a private backing as a private enterprise. But there are numerous examples, all function a little bit differently and are funded differently.
So do we have a list of all of those with how they're funded and how they're operating?
Yeah, we've done extensive research. I could compile it into a list, but I don't know that it's an exhaustive list by any means. We certainly looked into certain examples that sort of more fit the model we were looking to make.
Bergau was the only one that closely resembled what we want to do. Everything else across the state really is more privately based, it looked like from the research. You know, they had some funding, maybe they got a grant or something from a public entity. But the Bergau one is closer to what was envisioned here. And, you know, the thing in Bergau is that they have no restaurant. I mean, they're a dying economy, unfortunately, and that's what they needed to help food trucks to try to bring some food to that area.
So Amanda, didn't you tell me, if I'm not mistaken, that Little Washington is also is in the process through grant? I think they have.
Yes.
Received $400,000 in grants or more?
I would have to defer back to Margaret. I think we have the number, numbers as far as grant funds they've raised. But they have a market in their downtown and are extending and adding a commercial kitchen to support workforce and entrepreneurship.
Could I ask you a question, and this might be a Margaret question? This letter of intent, this will go before the Golden Leaf. This is for the Golden Leaf grant, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, let me ask you this, as professionals, what kind of questions would Golden Leaf have? They're not going to just come up here and you're not going to present a thing for a $5,000 check per commissary. What kind of questions will they be asking so that I'm satisfied that they've got the right answers? What questions will they probably have?
Well, they're going to want to know how many jobs are going to be created from this project.
Okay, and so the first year, how many jobs do you think will be created?
Well, we thought probably doing some projections that over the next, we did a three-year projection, that's 15 probably food trucks.
15 food trucks?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and maybe a Golden Leaf question would be, are these trucks going to be in New Bern? Are they going to be in Warsaw, Bergau, Havlot, Kentston? Or are they going to be in New Bern proper? Would that, is that a question they'll ask?
They might ask if they're going to be in Craven County.
Okay.
Since we're in Craven County.
Right. So would they have a question like, well, before we just write that check, is the city 100% running this? Is it a partnership?
Yeah, they'll ask who's managing the project.
Okay, and so, and going a little further, when they ask the question, now this is the interesting one. What will be the community college's participation in this, or what will be that? That they will be answering to the city of New Bern as to when hours of operation? I guess the community college is closed on Friday, so maybe the food truck thing will probably work Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then the college will use it Monday through Thursday? Is that how that would work?
I think that's something that is being discussed in the works shop. So I don't think we have those, all of that completely nailed down. But hopefully by October, when the full grant is due, we would.
So another question, so if the city's in charge of it, and the community college is kind of like quasi-subservient to the city, and let's say in the same period of time, let's go to a three- to five-year projection, let's say that the community college is going to be able to educate 200 to 300 employees for jobs here in Craven County, New Bern proper? How would you explain to them that the city of New Bern, similar to the simulator I keep going back to, how is that, the maintenance end of it, the management end of it, the electricity end of it, the price per? I think Alderman Harris has mentioned several times the sliding scale. I assume that's the economy's scale of more production. So is, does that mean at some point, if a person's very successful with a food truck, I think Mr. Patrick said that on a good day, $1,000, a bad day, $100, $200? Does that mean that if a person's really being successful and is doing $1,500 a day, that their hourly rate would be graduated down to $10 an hour? How would that work?
And I think, again, that's something that the work team is putting together. I don't think there's been a decision really about that.
Mayor, this is Alderman Harris. We can ask all these questions, but the point is, it's a letter of intent. And you can ask these questions towards the commissary or commercial kitchen, but if you listen to the meeting that was recorded, how are we not asking these same questions to the college? Because I'm trying to understand, you know, where the request was to have a facility specifically just to train people to go into the restaurant. We, you know, we have these conversations and, you know, we put our personal viewpoints on there because I don't think people are not wanting to work just because they don't want to work. And that's not directed towards you, but since this is a public forum, you know, COVID is a big reason why people are not working, because some people are not vaccinated. People don't want to be vaccinated. People don't want to wear masks, they do want to wear masks. Everybody's situation is different. But I'm not understanding why the terminology of, you know, partnering with the colleges not being said, because we're going based off their words. Dr. Stack said that he's willing to partner with us however we need to, to make this work, and that's in that meeting. So when we say, oh, they're not going to want to do this, we don't, we shouldn't speak out of term. We should speak based on what they said. And we came back as a group, and we stated that we would be back in three weeks to provide the rest of this information. And if all this is a letter of intent, we don't even know if we're going to get approved or not. We're just asking for you to sign, and the city attorney to sign. We've never been in this situation before with any type of project where we're going back and forth and having a million and one questions when it's just a letter of intent. And I think this is the frustration that we've expressed in previous board meetings, that when it's a project that is necessarily for entrepreneurs or in an area or used in a CNI that was based on the greater Five Points area, we have to go back and forth tit for tat, and all we're asking for is a signature and an opportunity. We're not saying it's just for food trucks or push carts. It could be individuals that want to go in canned tomatoes or jam and have a form of income. To me, I just feel like, you know, we're only wanting to give it to the college so we can go ahead and put people in restaurants. And that's not fair, because there's individuals that don't want to train to be in the restaurant when they can utilize their skills and recipes to sell their stuff in a commercialized kitchen for a certain price, because everybody can't get a brick and mortar. So I thought that when, you know, we had this discussion last month, that we were under the understanding of trying to make it work, and we're just going back and forth, and it's only a letter of intent. So, I mean, can we get this signed? Not, you know, we don't even know if we're going to get approved. We just want an opportunity, an opportunity to see where we can go. Because if we're being honest, before COVID happened, this project was full force. We got approved, or we had that grant, the Tobacco Trust grant. But because of political and controversial things, we lost that grant because an individual pulled out because of being harassed. So we didn't, we had a grant, we had money to move forward with this project. But politics and things got involved, and I understand we're all not going to agree. But this is just a letter of intent for $50,000. That's all it is. There's other individuals that live in this city that are entrepreneurs, and they deserve that opportunity if they pay tax money. They pay tax money. They pay tax money, and they're asking for you to listen to them and their part and work together. And if the college, if restaurant owners and us are willing to meet and work together, I don't understand why it's such a big deal for us to sign this letter. And Alderman Bingo just said it could be stopped at any time. It's just signing the letter, it's a deadline on Thursday, it's no harm, we're not committed to it. It's just saying that this is a letter of intent to apply. And then come the next meeting, we realize that it's not going to work, there's nothing else that we have to do. But if we do get to the meeting and we find out that it can work, and we didn't get this signed, that pushes the opportunity back. We're not trying to hold anything up. We just want everybody to win.
Margaret, how many grants are out there for this type of stuff? I mean, what's the chances of us getting another half million dollars in grant money?
Well, I've gotten $469,000 for the market in Little Washington.
And it's the same thing that we're?
It is with a commercial or commissary kitchen and.
So who's going to run that? Who's going to run that in Washington?
It's not the city, it's a farmer's market group.
No, it's their Swiss Bear.
Yeah, it's their downtown revitalization, so it is not the city of Washington.
So why isn't that information being presented to us? I mean, if you're asking us to make a decision on doing something like this, we've got to have the information. And if the information is available, then give it to us. But I haven't seen the first thing.
That's what we're in the process of, this subcommittee.
But we're asking to sign a letter of intent. Alderman Harris has made the argument tonight that we're utilizing a CNI plan and taking advantage of that to try to go get funds, which is exactly what's being advocated to do with the LOI tonight, when we're saying that, hey, look, we may not end up putting it there, we may put it somewhere else. So why would we enter a LOI under false pretense that probably won't work? So I would like for this board to make a decision tonight, once and for all, so there's no question about what the direction is with the Vault Center. I make a motion that we move forward with the original intent that we had in the April meeting to lease the space to the college so they can move forward with a food prep service program.
And I'll second that motion. We have a motion seconded, it's very discussion about the motion. I've seen no discussion, this is how they roll call started with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
No.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Harris?
No.
Alderman Beagle?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion passed, so from here, Mr. Davis, what is your crystal ball on the EDA and the lease? And the.
The lease can be signed.
Time of the essence of, let's get this ball run.
Yes, so the lease can be signed immediately, once we get the final paperwork back from the EDA. They've been pretty prompt in the last few weeks, so I would expect a week or two.
Great. Thank you. Let's see, are we under new business? And she's still up. Yes, Alderman Harris, I believe you're still at, it's your floor.
Yep, that was it, Mayor, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, Alderman Harris, that was it, Mayor, thank you. I'm done speaking.
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Astor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I just want everybody to please, I'm asking everybody to keep Tyler and Bowden Harris in their prayers. They unexpectedly lost their son, Bo, this week, and they need all the support and help that they can get at this time. And I also would like to ask, a couple of weeks ago, we asked for a map of the ditches. Is there a private report on where that map might be?
Yes, we should be able to present some to you probably first next week. They're finalized, and some of the, what's included on that map before we release it to you.
Great, thanks. George, while you're there. In about 15 years being on the board, I have had numerous complaints about drainage. And I'm actually getting more complaints right now about the correction, which is a good thing. Any means by which the remediation and of getting the cable back into the ground and the process of restoring the landscape, et cetera, would certainly be appreciated.
And I know exactly the neighborhood you're talking of.
Yeah.
And the contract right now is, we're looking at a two-week window from the scheduling that I've been told, from the finishing of dirt moving or excavation and regrading, to an end of having it resotted. So two weeks is what we're looking at. And unfortunately, it's a messy process. It's, you know, it's in their front yards, and it's not something we wanted to shy away from because it was difficult, but, you know, we've just got to work through the process.
Thank you. Anything?
George, while you're there, I want to thank you. This weekend was pretty eventful for us, going back and forth with that particular neighborhood. But I appreciate you being very attentive and quick to their responses. Could you maybe, since you're standing there, I was going to ask you anyway, could you just share with the public how the calls have been since this project has started? We're far from being complete, but I think you were telling me it's been a big improvement.
You know, other than ongoing construction concerns, which we knew were going to happen, actually, they've been, this is really the first neighborhood where we've had lots of concerns, but we're right in these people's front yards that are manicured and landscaped, and we understood that. And we made accommodations in the plans where these front yards are going to be resotted rather than just seeded, as we've done in some of the more, through the wood runs of the ditches. So, you know, in that part, I think we're going along very well. What I have seen is, I know y'all have been aware of the microburst rains we've had recently, where we're getting two, three, four inches in a couple hours. We have seen less calls at our office for drainage situations. So I think overall, we're seeing a vast improvement. It still takes some time when we have these heavy rains. We still have some areas we're going to need to work on. But, you know, to be able to expedite the water out of areas, I think it's really achieved what we're hoping it would.
So have you been in contact with a cable provider about? It looks to me like one of your major holders is going to be getting those cables back underground. Are they cooperating?
We've, I've actually met on site with Southern Link, and we've had some situations where they've actually had a technician there while the contractor was digging, because we're in areas where there were multiple cables, we knew we were going to hit it. And they've worked pretty good thus far, and we're having another site meeting tomorrow where we can further evaluate what's going on. It's just, you know, it's a difficult situation where we have lots of things in the right of way. We have lots of utilities in the right of way, and we've got to excavate the dirt. Where in some instances, the culverts are completely buried. So, you know, we're going down deep into the. we're going, going down deep into those areas, so it, it's just a process and it, unfortunately, it's an uncomfortable process, but like I say, hopefully in two weeks, we'll, we'll be out of there and we will have resolved some of the issues.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
One other question, George, the construction that's going on Race Track Road, how's that going?
The construction on Race Track Road?
Yeah, they have, uh, what is it, Clayton?
I, I believe that's what a resource is putting in a new section of forms making on that road right now.
Okay, okay. Alderman Astor, did you have anything else?
I do not.
Okay, Alderman Kinsey?
No, sir, I do not.
Alderman Best?
No, sir, I do not.
Alderman Odom?
No, sir.
Okay, at this time, we're, that's new business, do we need a closed session tonight?
We do, may members of the board, um, discuss a personnel matter pursuant to 143, 1311A6, need to discuss the potential acquisition of real property pursuant to 143, 1311A5 and A3 and may also need to discuss the, uh, an economic incentive associated with the location of a new business within the city pursuant to 143, 1311A4.
Second.
Motion and second, is there a discussion, seeing that, all in favor, well, let's have a roll call, uh, roll call with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
We're gonna go into closed session. We are, we are now back in open session.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
And so, we are now, we've, we've just come out of closed session and is there any more business to come forward?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Any involvement at this time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we hire Foster Hughes...
Hello? Can you hear us, Jamie?
Okay, I think she must be muted or something.
I'm not able to hear you guys, can you hear me?
Just a minute.
Can you hear us? Hello? We're not, we're not muted? And she's not either. Alderwoman Harris, can you hear me? Can you try, I will put this in the chat, but can you try rejoining us?
Well, we can't.
Yeah, you better.
We gotta try to get her back.
Ask her if she could leave and rejoin, see if we could get her call you back, if she is.
Please, ma'am.
She's gonna hang up on you now.
Alderwoman Harris, can you hear us? Okay, she's muted. Can you unmute yourself? Yes, can you hear us? I can't hear you guys, do you wanna just call me on the phone?
I can put her on the cell phone if that's fine.
Yeah, it's fine, as long as she can hear.
Yeah, as long as she can participate and be part of the conversation. Can it be recorded?
Yes.
I'll let her know we're going to call her.
Hello?
Hey there, I'm putting you on speaker.
Alderwoman Harris, can you hear us now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, and do you have where her voice can be, uh, will be recorded, et cetera?
It's being recorded.
Okay, we are now back in open session, is there any more business to come forward with the board, Alderman?
Yes, sir. At this time. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we hire Foster Hughes as our permanent city manager at a salary of, do we have to give all that information?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, at a salary of a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars a year plus a five hundred dollar a month vehicle allowance and also ask Mr. Hughes to work as quickly as possible to locate a assistant city manager and all this will be effective at the September fourteenth meeting.
Do I have to add anything else to that?
Uh, so, probably to our legal, our city attorney.
And, um, this all subject to Mr. Foster Hughes working with our city attorney on an agreeable contract.
I second that motion.
Motion and second, is there a discussion of that motion?
Yes, this is Alderman Harris.
Okay.
I just want to say that I don't agree with the process, the fact that we did not allow other candidates to apply, um, I don't agree that some people opened up, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there's no further discussion, we're gonna have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
No.
Alderman Beagle?
Yes.
And motion carries at this time and is there any further business to come forward with the board? Do you have any, anything to add or anything on your desk?
Yes, sir, I'd just like to say thank you for the opportunity, I look forward to working with everyone and moving New Bern forward.
Thank you, sir, congratulations.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second, to adjourn, uh, let's have a roll call, we'll be adjourned, I'll, uh, start with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.